I'd like to call this regular Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Onagostu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Stochek?
Here.
And Mrs. Hausum?
Here.
We are all present. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on our agenda is district goals. Our goals remain the same: academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. And all the decisions that we make are measured against those goals. We do have reason for recognition tonight. Dr. Reiba?
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Yes, we do. And I'm going to turn it over to our very own Laura Hausum, who's going to step in and provide the presentation on the PTA Council Volunteer Hours for this past year. Laura?
Thank you. Mrs. Junkerberg couldn't be here tonight, so I asked her if I could read her report for her. It's kind of bittersweet for me. This is the end of my 17-year run being involved in the PTA. Started at Maraski, gosh, back in 2006 with Dr. Reiba. So I've been president at all levels, been very involved, so I'm not going to get emotional. I told Sharon I wouldn't cry. So with that, I'm going to read Kelly's report. Starts with, "Good evening, members of the school board, Dr. Reiba and Mrs. Pelco. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. I, Kelly Junkerberg, had the privilege of serving my first year as president of Strongsville Council PTA this school year. Unfortunately, I could not be there tonight, and Laura Hausum is presenting on behalf of the Council PTA and the nine units that serve the children, parents, and schools of Strongsville. During this past year, PTAs in Strongsville have provided many enrichment activities for our children. We've been able to interact in the school's safety safely within the district guidelines, and we are extremely happy to be back. I am very proud of all of our units for working hard to bring their schools new ways of doing things and evolving with the world around us. Some projects and activities included book fair, carnivals, preschool prom, family fun nights, student group enrichment grants, holiday shops, family math and science nights, after-prom, senior banners, multiple successful fun runs, many teacher appreciation events, SMS Gives Back, plus so many more activities and fundraisers. We have worked with staff members and community leaders through the DARE program, Strongsville Food Bank, Guidestone Adopt a Family Holiday Program, and the Strongsville Education Foundation. Collectively, between council and the nine units, we approved over $20,000 in teacher grants that include classroom and building materials and resources. In May, Strongsville PTAs gave out 18 scholarships totaling $9,000 to our graduating seniors. At the council level, we have continued to host our Rockin' at the Rec SMS dances for our middle schoolers and raised $17,500 for grants and scholarships. In March, we celebrated our annual Founder's Day ceremony by recognizing 10 individuals that go above and beyond for the betterment of our students and school district. This year, I am happy to present to the board 13,236 hours of volunteer service given by our PTAs for the benefit of the children, staff, and schools of Strongsville. I'm proud to say that this year's involvement level in our schools is similar to pre-COVID years, and wow, is it nice to be back to normal. Thank you to the board and our school administrators for giving us the opportunity to work with you and to make positive contributions to our children's education experiences." And that concludes Kelly's report. I just want to say, if you see me lurking around, don't be nervous. I'm still just wanting to be out there and volunteering. Thank you.
And I will take the opportunity to, on behalf of the board, to thank the entire PTA. Again, that was 13,236 hours of volunteer service. Laura highlighted some of the funds that were raised, et cetera, but I think what's important to recognize is the memories that the PTA are able to impact on our students. And those hopefully will last a lifetime. And we're going to thank Laura for 17 years. I won't count up the hours, but that, you know, I think that's a part of the special story that we get to tell in Strongsville, and it's something we should celebrate and be proud of. So congratulations to the PTA. Thank you to the PTA, and congratulations to Laura. Next on our agenda is public comment. I do have one public comment. Jess Koza? Jess, you've done this before. You know the drill, and you have approximately three minutes.
Okay. My name is Jess Koza, and I live at 9812 Hazelwood Avenue. I'm up here because of some of the comments that are said about diversity council. And I wanted to share with you something, and I've already shared this with Dr. Reiba. I work for a company that has a diversity council, and I had the pleasure of joining a couple of meetings. And it was very interesting what I had learned from them. And I just wanted to give you a little insight of what they do. So they had everything broken up into different types of subcommittees. Subcommittees that will target employees that were past veterans, service members, employees who are single parents or working parents, employees of a different race or color, and employees who are more tech savvy. And what I noticed that each group was targeting was they were looking for ways to help the employees in the working environment, whether it be accommodations, or, you know, just, for example, with my service. That's the name of the subcommittee, and it's for veterans and people who work in the service that will work for us part-time or full-time. That group taught, like, it's just like a networking group, and they'll reach out and look for, like, resources or benefits that will help them, maybe add something onto the company health plans. The same thing with my family. They look into childcare options. They look into health coverage, family plans. They have one that, for people who love to volunteer. And our company does something called Soul for Souls, where you donate shoes to us, and you get points. And they go down to Soul for Souls, and they'll refurbish them. They give them away to families that need them. If they can't refurbish the shoe, they grind it down, and they make that material for playground turf, which is great. It keeps the shoes out of landfills. They have a group that targets people who are interested in making more sustainable choices with our recycling programs. So I just wanted to give you that overview, and I shared with Dr. Reiba the stuff that I got from my company. And one of the things that I'm currently working on, because it was something that I didn't notice, is they didn't have something for people with disabilities who work in the company. You know, I myself, who has executive functioning issues, things at work I might need, for example, is I need a nightly checklist to make sure that I'm getting all my closing stuff done, or if I need more of a visual training when I'm learning a new computer system. So I just wanted to give you that overview, and I'm more than happy to share more information as I continue doing those groups. I got a lot out of it. And I wanted to share with you the cheesy line that they have, and it's equality is everybody gets a pair of shoes, while equity is everybody gets a pair of shoes that fit them best. And I thought it was cheesy, but it's fitting in my line of work. But thank you.
I like it. We appreciate your comments, and I'm sure Dr. Reiba will steal that line eventually. Next is treasurer's report. Mr. Onagostu, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have one item for discussion and a few items for consideration. The first item for discussion involves potential cafeteria price increases for breakfast and lunch. Just when I prepared this to be a discussion item, we had one set of data, and then, since that time, President Biden had announced that the reimbursements for breakfast and lunch are going to increase. Lunch by 40 cents, and breakfast by 15 cents. And that's the reimbursement that the district gets back for every meal served. However, we don't know how that's going to impact this recommendation. So my plan initially was to have this as a discussion item in this meeting, and then have it as a vote at the first August meeting. I'll continue to go through the numbers that we had originally. The USDA still hasn't updated its target lunch prices, so this could be potential change based on those increases. But just to give you an idea on where we were prior to that, I just want to run through this. So annually, going into every school year, we're required to complete a tool called the Paid Lunch Equity Tool to measure our lunch prices against the USDA target lunch price. The lunch prices are required to be at or above the USDA target lunch price to receive our federal reimbursements for the upcoming school year. 2022-23, the district will fall below the USDA target lunch price. The target lunch price has increased from $3, which was 2019, 2020 school year, to $3.31 for the upcoming school year. Comparing it to 2020, that was the last year that we were in the National School Lunch Program. The past two school years, we were under what was called SSO, the Seamless Summer Option, where every student ate free. At the end of that, at the end of the last school year, that program ended. So we're going back to the National School Lunch Program. So we have to follow these, the criteria that was in place for the National School Lunch Program. I asked our food service director, Donna, to run what a 10-cent increase, a 20-cent increase, 25-cent increase, and a 30-cent increase would compare against the USDA target. And just to kind of show you the numbers here, so last school year, the target was, well, 18, 19, the target was $2.92, and our average lunch price was $3.15, or average weighted lunch. So what that means is the secondary lunch price was $3, and then the elementary lunch price was $3, and the secondary lunch price was $3.25. We have to look at meals served and then come up with a weighted average to combine the two and see how it falls against the target. 1920, the target was $3.23, and again, we were at, or it was at $3, and again, we were at $3.15. 21 and 22 were SSO. So now that we're going back to the National School Lunch Program, leaving it at the $3 and the $3.25, that averages $3.15, which is below the new target of $3.31. So a 10-cent increase would bring our average to $3.23, which we would be 8 cents below the target. A 15-cent increase, we would be 3 cents below. A 20-cent increase, we would be 2 cents above. And a 25-cent increase, we would be 7 cents above, or a 2% increase. And a 30-cent increase would be 12 cents above. The original recommendation was to do the 25-cent increase. That way, it gives us a little wiggle room for next year in case the target increases again, and could most likely. And if it does, maybe we would fall below that, or if it goes above, the increase won't be as drastic. A couple other things. The last time we have increased lunch prices was the 2014-15 school year. We do have an option to do a one-year waiver not to increase prices for the upcoming school year. However, at the time of this calculation, prior to President Biden's announcement, we were not recommending that we utilize the waiver for the following reasons: that food costs are continuing to increase, and it may result in greater deficit. The waiver is for one year, which could delay the inevitable that we have to increase next year. And with inflation, that target could be even higher, so it could be even higher than the 25 cents that we were recommending for this year. So we can continue to monitor where we're at, and I can come back to the board with recommendation by the August 14 meeting. But at the time that this was put together, we were recommending a 25-cent increase. So what we're waiting on now is the new numbers, how it's going to impact based on the announcement and where we fall within the paid equity tool with the target meal prices. So I'll turn it over to the board for any...
Any questions for George?
I think our, as an administration, as a district, we want to make sure that we're compliant with the federal law. We want to be respectful, as respectful as we can to our families, and at the same time, to the entire district. So prior to the change, the proposed change from the Biden administration, I think the 25 cents was reasonable. We'll wait and see, and once we have, once we have complete information, we'll make an intelligent decision.
And the recommend, I forgot to share, I did have another handout. The current meal structure for elementary breakfast is $2, the recommendation. Breakfast would stay the same. Elementary lunch was $3, and an increase would be $3.25. Secondary lunch would stay the same at $2.25, and then secondary lunch would increase from $3.25 to $3.50. Milk would stay the same. Adult breakfast would stay the same, and adult lunch would also increase from 3, by 25 cents, from $3.75 to $4.
Thank you, George.
Yep. The remaining items on my agenda, Item B, Cafeteria Change Fund. This is an annual item. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the Cafeteria Change Fund be established in the amount of $1,000. These funds are used to establish startup funds for school cafeterias. This $1,000 is split between the cafeterias, and it's the money that goes in the registers to be able to provide change at the start of each day. Same with Item C, it's the Middle School Athletic Change Fund. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the Middle School Change Fund be established in the amount of $500. These funds are used to establish startup funds for the middle school athletic events. Again, same concept as the cafeteria. At the end of the year, they turn in the change funds, and at the beginning of the year, they get them back. The high school is not listed because the high school keeps theirs year-round. They have a safe at the high school, which is, which is there, and we account for it twice a year to make sure they have what they should have. And then Item D is a grant that was issued for last year from the Strongsville Education Foundation Grant. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the following Strongsville Education Foundation grants for in-house field trips be approved for fiscal year '22 for a total amount of $6,986. The Strongsville Education Foundation provided $2,000 to each school to provide in-house field trips, up to $2,000. And Item E is an amended temporary appropriation for fiscal year '23. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that an amended temporary appropriation for fiscal year '23 be approved, and the explanation can be found in Exhibit A. And with that, that concludes my report.
Any follow-up questions for George?
Please let the Education Foundation know of our thanks. We appreciate everything they do for us. And it's time for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. George, if you can disconnect from the projector, that way I could put some slides up. We have two discussion items for you tonight, the first being school safety and the second being a current enrollment study that we've just completed, and want to share some highlights there.
If gross.
I think the...
It's stuck on the...
That's okay. I think the HDMI may reach.
Let me go through the source. It disconnected from my computer.
All right. So what I have in front of you today, you have the slides in front of you if you want to follow along or on the board, but we're going to talk about school safety. And I've broken down the presentation here tonight into two areas. First of all, we've been working on school safety forever. It's always been an important part of what we've done. But through the partnership we've had with the police, with Chief Goss, Chief Kovek, and now Chief Fender over the years, we've spent a lot of time and energy in enhancing our safety. So I want to share with you what we've done and what we currently have in place, and then we'll transition to what are some items that we want to consider. The items we want to consider are based on our items we want to consider in conjunction with the police department. So everything that I'm going to talk about today in prioritization of needs and feedback is not just me as an educational leader talking. We met a couple weeks ago with Chief Fender and probably five of his leadership team members in the police department to generate some of this feedback here. So I just want to give that context. So in terms of current safety measures, we want to start with building access. You know, what do we do to protect the exterior of our schools and our school facilities? We have camera coverage around the buildings for the exterior. What we've also done for arrival and dismissal, as much as possible, we've been selective of which doors students can enter and exit from. Obviously, some of our bigger secondary buildings become more challenging with that. But arrival and dismissal are on select doors. At some of our buildings, we have shatter-resistant film on doors and windows as well. Again, some people ask, is this make it bulletproof? No, it does not. What it does is make it shatter-proof. So that's the one protection that we have in some of our facilities. And then we have safety ballards at the middle school and high school. So the big balls that are in front of each of those buildings are the safety ballards that were there, and they were put in during the construction and renovation process. When we take a look at what have we done to enhance the interior of our building in terms of people being able to enter our buildings, again, we've got camera coverage in all of our buildings. We'll talk about where we have to enhance camera coverage in our buildings. And I would also note that the police department has access to our cameras on an as-needed basis. So if they need to see in our building, they can do that. So they have access to that as well. Couple years ago, with the bond dollars, we were able to put secure vestibules in every building. So everybody, when they enter our building, they're kind of enclosed in security doors. They're not able to access immediately like they were years ago. We have a visitor management system. It's Envoy, what we use, where students, or I'm sorry, any visitor has to screen in. It's not just about, you know, having an ID badge that says the time, the location, who you are, but it scans your license, and it scans various databases to see if you're a sexual offender, if there's other databases that are there that we should not allow you to be in our building. And so that's one of the things we have. We have magnetic locking doors that are hooked with intercoms, videos, electronic access from our office staff. All of our classroom doors have bolo sticks. So bolo sticks are, there's a metal bracket at the bottom of a door, there's a steel pin. And I can't remember, we've had them for like three or four years now, but the amount of force to try and open the door with a bolo stick is nearly impossible for just a person to do. So those are, those are on doors, almost all of our, they're on all of our classroom doors. We don't put them on some office doors that, I'm trying to make sure I'm saying this correctly. We don't put them on office doors that open inward because of the, almost all of our classroom doors open outward. So that's one of the security issues that we have, is if police need to get into a room, they need to be able to have, make sure the door opens the right way. And then, if you see, we have it in this building, and we did it at Surar and Whitney. We have decorative film coverings. What that means is it's not shatter-resistant, but we've worked with the police. If you've been in Surar and Whitney, there's like shoulder, that's my shoulder, so shoulder-length windows and kind of vertical blinds, and it was easy to see in the room. So we put the decorative coverings on there that when the lights are out, you can't see in the rooms. And so that helps with visibility if we have to have students, you know, stay in the classroom. In terms of what we do in terms of safety plans and drills, all of our buildings with students have emergency management plans. We've talked about those in the past. We have a consultant who's a former individual from, oh my gosh, the, the group just went out of my mind. National Security Group. I can't think of the, Homeland Security. That's it. Thank you. Homeland Security that works with us. But as you can see here, again, they're approved by the Ohio Department of Education, and they're not just internally approved. They have to be signed off by police, fire, EMS, county emergency management, parent representation, teachers, support staff, and a principal. So those are all there and kind of detail our emergency management plans, as well as a series of drills that we do. So rapid dismissal drills, that's the new terminology of what we used to call a fire drill, right? So that just means there's an event in the building that we need to exit as soon as possible. And so we have to do that six times per year. We have a theoretical safety drill, or a tabletop exercise, where we work and talk about scenarios and how we would react to those scenarios, and that has to be done at least one time a year. And then we have school safety drills, which would be considered more of the active threat drills if there was an intruder in the building, and those have to happen at least three times a year. I want to share, prior to COVID, that we were really moving forward in a great trajectory with the school safety drills. We still do the drills, but because of COVID, we've had to just kind of the shelter in place, the stay-in-place in the classroom. What I mean by what did we, how did we enrich those drills? We had police, the police are always a part of the drills. But we had them especially at the secondary level where it was more age-appropriate, that the training that we provide gives teachers and students options of either to blockade yourself in the room and how to do that, of either to flee and evacuate, or either to attack, all right, or to, you know, save yourself, whether it's throwing something or, you know, moving something in the area. So we were moving and giving people choices in these drills that you need to react, and then the police would come and debrief with our staff afterwards to say, "That was not a great decision," right? "You came out in the hallway where the threat was, or you made the right call to provide that training." But what we started with is, you know, you start out very basic. This is a safety drill, right? And people just kind of locked down. Then we started to have air horns, you know, air horns where people could hear where the air horns would simulate the threat, and people would have to make a decision. And then it went from there. So what we are looking to do this year is, again, start at the foundational level, because we've had a couple years where we couldn't, we just did the shelter-in-place portion of it, but start to retrain our folks about how they have some decision-making to do. And that will continue this year. And again, all of our safety drills, the police are invited, the police are there. They'll walk the building with the administration, and then there'll be a debrief afterwards of where we did well and where there's areas for improvement. We have a strong partnership, as I talked about, with our Strongsville Police Department, and it's been there for many years. People ask me once in a while, ALIS training, right? That's a popular training that's out there. Do we provide ALIS training to our staff? And the answer is, yeah, but with tweaks. So what I mean by that is the training that we provide to our staff is not created by us. It's created by the Strongsville Police Department. And if you know our police department, they're highly respected in this area of, you know, whether it's businesses, or churches, or schools of safety. So they've taken, if you look at ALIS, it is a lot of, you know, either flee, or evacuate, or attack, or, you know, shelter in place, but they've made some enhancements to it. So every new staff member, when we do our new teacher orientation here in a couple weeks, they do a full comprehensive training with all of our new staff. On an annual basis, they do a refresher training with all existing staff. So they come in and do that, and as we've talked about, they're with us for all of our school safety drills. The other thing that we've had in place for a number of years right now, it's called a Siri radio. And so what that means is we have a, it looks like a walkie-talkie radio. It's in every one of our buildings. And by the push of a button, it connects us directly with the Southwest Dispatch Center. So you don't have to pick a phone. You don't have to call. You could press the button, and it's two-way communication automatically. And so we've had those for years. We test them out multiple times throughout the year to make sure that they're still working. But again... But again, that gives us direct contact where they can see and hear what's going on and we can talk to them. And those are located in the buildings. And then for, I can't recall, maybe, I mean, the SROs for a while, but the rotating throughout the buildings has been for at least five or six years. We have an SRO at the middle school and high school every day. And we have two rotating police officers in the pre eight to five buildings each day as well. And next year, due to staffing issues, we've had rotating officers at the high school where we, in past years, we've had one person. Next year, the staffing issues have been addressed. So we will have one SRO dedicated to the high school every day and one SRO dedicated to the middle school. And we'll talk about options for the elementary buildings here coming up. In terms of reporting or responding to safety measures, we do have an anonymous, you can put your name there, but 90% of the people leave it anonymous. But an anonymous reporting for student, staff, parents, and community, it is used quite frequently for a variety of issues or concerns. And so it's a great communication tool. So again, you know, this has been a great tool for our students to utilize and say, hey, I overheard this in class today. I don't know if it's legit or not, but I want to let you know. And then it gives us the ability to, they don't have to worry about the anxiety of coming into an office. If somebody submits this, it goes to all of the building administration. It goes to Jenny, me, and Andy Trujillo. And if it's of a, the reason we like this service is it's 24 hour, 24/7 reviewed by a human being. And if there's anything that they feel is immediately concerning, they call you. So I get calls and it'll say, you know, please check your email right away. And we do that. So it's a nice service to have. The other thing that we've had for a while, and this has just become a requirement, but we've put into place that Jenny led that and put that in place a couple of years ahead of time, is a threat assessment team. So if somebody makes a threat to do harm against our school, we have a trained team at every building to be able to address that, get together. There's a variety of people that, there's a lot of words here and I'll send this out to folks so they can see it. But the highlights are is, hey, when we learn about a threat, we are going to call a team together. It could be a school counselor, a psychologist, it's going to include the police, the principal, and any other, you know, applicable folks. And they're going to look at the facts and they're going to make a determination. And so they'll come out of that team meeting to say whether it was a credible threat or not a credible threat to make decisions. So that's something, it's good to have that training at every building. So folks have a system and a process to use when students say things that sometimes, you know, students say that shouldn't be said, but it really wasn't meant as a threat versus things that were truly meant as a threat. So that is what we've done up to this point. Any questions or clarifications on that before I move to what is on the radar for what we could do? Okay. So future safety measures, what are some things? Again, this goes into what is the conversation that we had with the police department, where we talked about what are things on their needs list for us and what are things on our needs list? So in terms of student and arrival and dismissal, like I said, we've done a better job over the years of limiting access to our buildings. What they're sharing is whether it's arrival or dismissal or elementary or secondary, we need to have whatever door is used. And at the high school, we're going to need multiple doors. So they've gone from saying that you should only use one door to you can use whatever door you think is appropriate as long as an adult is there. So if you can't have an adult there, then you shouldn't open that door. You know, one of the things too is what do we do with the dismissal and parent pickup, right? At the elementary schools? You know, again, they said, you need to have somebody that's there that can visibly see where students are going. And if that's not happening, then you need to find an adult to do that. And then we need to provide safety training for them to how to respond. How do you respond if you're monitoring an outside door and you see something in the parking lot that you need to address? So that's some of the enhanced training that we'll be working on. In terms of exploring additional options, the state has had an Ohio School Safety Center. They offer, they monitor statewide social media. They provide some different training options. So I've sent that to the police to look at to say, we don't want to have conflicting training. Not that any training is bad, right? But we don't want to have, we want to have a clear message. So they're looking at that. And also the county, Cuyahoga County has just come out with a Ready X program, which is a county based safety program. And so the police department is reviewing those and going to see if there's anything from those that they would like us to take advantage of. The one area that I would say is a, is an area that we've started to draft in the reviewing, but needs some greater work than some of the other things, is finalizing our communication plans and procedures if we were ever truly in an active threat, right? In an active threat, you're going to have people in multiple locations. You're going to have to release people to those. You're going to have to be able to communicate with media, communicate internally. So we started to draft kind of our communications response and who is doing what and when. And they're reviewing that. So that's going to take some time to really, really shore up. Room signage and building maps. Right now, all of our custodians are auditing our signage. So what the police have requested is that every building that, every classroom that has an exterior windows, have the room number clearly listed in big numbers so they can see it. So they want to be able to see the perimeter of the building and look and say, okay, that's room 134. And then they want the same thing internally. They want to be in the hallway and to see, so if you look at some of our elementary buildings, it'll say, you know, Mr. Reiba on the door instead of, you know, room 324. So that's what they're doing now. Our building custodians by the end of the month are going through and auditing that. The one thing I failed to mention in what we do is we do have a security checklist that we have that are done on a quarterly basis by our custodians and principals. And look at a variety of, spot check a variety of areas of safety and security for us. But that's one that we need to take a look at. We are, and then make sure our building maps are up to date with those numbers as well. Now, one of the things we've shared internally and externally this week is we have a large scale training that's planned with the local safety services on August 10th. This has been in the mix from Chief Fender for a number of months here. But on August 10th, it will be, it's a great opportunity for safety forces to train and learn and practice, but also for us as well. So we've got volunteer students and volunteer staff that are there. But we've required that all building secretaries, administrators, central office administrators, as well as head custodians be there as well. Because those are all key people in case of a threat. So again, I kind of titled those as low cost, no cost. Those are just effort and work that we're doing that will continue. And these will be implemented, if not before the start of the school year, shortly thereafter. This is the-
Cameron, if I can interject real quick, what is the timeline to complete the communication procedures?
Right now, the draft is in the police's, their purview. So that's something that before school starts, we'll have that ironed out.
And then how will we practice it? Will it become part of our drill?
That's the part where I'm going to be working with the police to see that piece of it. Because it is hard to recreate, right? But that's the part, you know, some of the things like if we have to evacuate, what am I taking with me, right? What do I have as a building secretary, as a principal? What are the things? So those are things that as we start from the foundational level again and start to build up in our safety training exercises, those are things that we'll be looking to enhance.
Great.
So these are items that were also on the list that we talked about. And I know they're numbered, and I say prioritize costs, but they are not, other than number one, they're not prioritized in order of police preference. So number one, in conversations, I'm sorry, number two. In conversations with Chief Fender, we already have the SROs at the middle school and high school every day. That's going to cost the district $97,000. It'll be on the agenda here in a little bit for you to approve. It's something we've always had. What is the difference now is because of budgetary costs for the city, it was requested that we split the costs of the SROs. Prior to COVID, the city paid for the full cost of the high school and the middle school SRO. During COVID, because of staffing issues, we took over that cost, but it was a different rate. It was a $35 an hour rate. Now with this, they asked, and I agree, and I'm recommending to you that we split that cost. We're actually taking both officers and splitting the cost right down the middle for 178 school days, eight hours a day. So that's in place. Number two is, in talking with Chief Fender of what he prioritizes, is having some sort of safety element in the other six buildings that we have, the preschool and the five elementary schools. The reason I have to be determined as a cost is it depends what option of safety element you go with, that that cost can vary significantly. Other than that, when you look through three through five, let's look at that as kind of on the same line. And so these are other things that we're investigating. So as I said earlier, we have a secure, security film on some of our windows in some of our buildings. He is requesting that on any window and door that is in the secure vestibules or that's in the main office area, that we look at the expense of adding that security film. And the film that he's talking about specifically would also maybe need to be adjusted in the buildings. We have it because he wants almost the film that's like a two way, where they, you can't see in from the outside, but we can see you. So almost like the two way mirror concept. So that's something that, you know, we'll start to research to look at how much this is and come back to you with a cost so you can make an informed decision. The other thing that's on there is increased camera coverage. So we have phenomenal camera coverage at the high school and middle school. New building, renovated building. The elementary schools, buildings, and the preschool, we have camera coverage. But I'm not going to say specifically where the cameras are or how much, but it needs to be increased. So I've asked Mr. Brechner, our operations manager, to create a plan to increase those cameras at the buildings. And, you know, we'll bring that cost to you of saying, here's what it's going to cost to do it all at once, or here's what we can do in a two year, three year phase in. With the cameras, it's not just a camera device issue, it's a server issue. So we have to, or cloud based, you would know better than I would, Rich. But we, right now, per board policy, we have to store camera footage for X amount of days and then it starts to rerecord itself. So increasing the capacity of the cameras to the level we're going to need to, we currently don't have enough space to save the data that we need to. So it's kind of a twofold need. The last piece of it is something we worked on a lot and we were close. And then COVID hit and they kind of got delayed a little bit. But these are called stop the bleed kits. So I put, this is, this is something that Chief Draves and the Strongsville Fire Department has worked hand in hand with us. And really what he has been doing and taking the lead on is doing the research to say what truly needs to be. And these are trauma first aid kits, tourniquets, bandages, you know, other things that are in there. That doesn't need to be in every classroom, but he's proposing that we purchase 500 of these. It's really a one time cost until you use it. And that we would have those located throughout different strategic areas of the building. That cost for 500 of the kits is $20,000. Prior to COVID, we were working with a partner that was looking to split the cost with us. We're looking to reengage with that partner to see if they're still interested in that partnership. But all told, that would be a $20,000 expense. In the dark green, these are areas that come up as discussion items and we've talked about that are not recommended by the police department. Not recommended in terms of, hey, they're bad ideas. But just in terms of their knowledge and expertise about threats to school buildings and how, what the kind of patterns are currently or in the past, and the management of these items, they're not suggesting that they're worth the financial investment. So metal detectors, metal detectors come up frequently from the police. You know, the analogy that was given to me is besides going to the airport, how many times have you gone somewhere? You go through the metal detector, it beeps and somebody says, just, it's your keys, it's your belt, whatever. It becomes difficult to manage. What they did suggest is, hey, maybe you purchased a few wands? That if somebody, if you have reasonable suspicion, you can use the wand. But the full metal detectors are too difficult to manage and they're, they, they're not going to provide the level of security there. And if you look at the trends in school violence, nobody's checking in and going through a metal detector. They're entering the buildings in other ways. The other thing was putting bollards at elementary schools. Again, the reason for that is that would be a nice thing, but not worth the expense at this point when we have other prioritized items. Simply based on the trends of people are not using their vehicle to break into and enter elementary buildings and even high schools or middle schools. When we look at constructing new elementary schools, then yes, that's going to be a feature that we put in there. But right now, not a prioritized expense. So with that, I want to turn it back over to you, Mr. Miko. You know, some of the stuff, I guess what I would say is number one, you're going to vote on here shortly. Number three and four, we've got to do some research and we'll come back to you with the cost of what those are going to be. Number five, I would like some direction as to whether or not we get this partner. Am I good to go with, you know, purchasing the stop the bleed kits? And then number two, in terms of options or discussions for consideration. Number two does not need a decision today. I think this is a large topic that we need to talk about. And I would suggest we develop some guidance and then we bring back some of our safety experts to discuss further. But just wanted to get some guidance on initial thoughts or questions you may have on number two. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Miko.
Who wants to begin?
I'll go first. I've had this on my mind for a while now. And it actually kind of started with commencement when I went to go hand out diplomas. And I was surprised at just how easy it was for me to get into a door that had nobody at it and how much I walked around the school and nobody noticed me. And I couldn't find anybody. And I hadn't been in the high school in however long in the athletic wing. And I was walking around for like five minutes trying to find everybody and just the access I had to walking in. And no one would have recognized who I was. And I don't know if it was just because I was wearing a dress. But it made me think about like what happens in the elementary schools if I walked up there with a bunch of cupcakes to a side door and I knocked and I pretended like I was trying to come into a classroom and a kid let me in, for example, thinking like, oh, they're bringing something for a birthday. So I actually met with the mayor on this past Monday and the director of public safety, Charlie Goss. And they said, you know, they'd be willing to do anything that we want them to do or help with all this. And they look forward to being able to be of assistance in these things. And someone wise said to me, what's the probability of something like this happening? Not very high. What's the possibility? Very high. So I think that this is, for me, one of the biggest priorities within our school district as we ramp up and get ready for a new school year. And I'd hate to not cover it until we're getting back into it and say like, oh man, now we already have this ahead of us. We were having trouble finding people like school resource officers. Because obviously you have to be properly trained for that. You have to go through like mental checks and things like that. So I think there's a lot of steps that go into it. For me, I feel like the price of it, I don't want to say is the least of our concerns, but I'd rather be safe than sorry. And I think we all feel that way. So I look forward to expanding this conversation between us to figure out the best thing so that from the beginning, stuff is deterred. And it's set from the very first day of school of if someone were to try something, it would be very, very impossible for them to get away with it. Because I think it's obvious that when people are threats to the schools, they're not necessarily looking after their own life. They're not looking to survive it at all times. It's a matter of how do we deter it from happening in the first place? Because these people aren't looking to save their own lives in the process of what they're doing. So that's what I have to say.
I think it was well said. I was going to, you know, as a board, as an administration, this is all, this is top of mind. And I think it's top of mind for two reasons. One, with COVID ending, good, better, and different COVID. I don't want to say we disregarded it, but it wasn't a primary concern. And quite frankly, pragmatically, you know, for some of the time, the students weren't in the building. So it wasn't the same level of concern. But I think it's just natural that we're coming back to this. And I'm glad to see that we're doing the drills again because those are all important. And then it goes without saying that the tragedy in Uvalde and all the other tragedies that have been occurring recently makes all of this top of mind. And even if you didn't want to think about it, you're going to think about it. So I think we have a good plan in place. And I want to compliment and thank our partners with the city, Chief Draves, Chief Fender, Safety Director Goss, I need to remember the title, speaking of brain hiccups. But they have been nothing but helpful. They're, you know, anything we ask of them, they're ready to partner and collaborate. I think to work through our priority list and do what's best. I was talking to Cameron earlier about this. I know all the questions to ask. I don't have the qualification to answer them. You know, there's, there's the challenges of an active shooter. There's the challenges of all the other safety concerns we have. You know, an SRO addresses not just active shooters. It addresses some of the safety concerns, some of the issues we have, you know, just, you know, with kids at the high school, whether it's vaping, whether it's alcohol, whether it's drugs, all of those issues. We have to consider and will consider and just keep on considering all of those issues. So if it makes sense to everyone, I think it make, the first path forward is let's invite our city partners to work together with us and get some more information on safety services and define TBD. I'm comfortable giving Cameron the direction, if everyone else is. If we find a partner, the Stop the Bleed Kits, if Chief Draves is recommending it, that's good for me. So finding a partner to help defray the costs is great. And regardless, I think we need to pursue those. I think it's important to pursue them. And then we'll just continue to work through the list. Steve will bring us the numbers on the camera, on the security cameras and the window film. And then we'll just keep this going. This isn't the one and done. This is a constant process, unfortunately, or however you want to say that. But does anybody else have any questions or concerns?
I just want to ask, the window film. Like, I'm confused, like, you're saying like, if someone were to shoot, they were in a vestibule and they had that on it, would the bullet go through, or would the, like, I'm confused.
It would. So the bullet would go through, but the glass would not shatter, which would, and it would prevent them from coming in. So if somebody could only get in by shooting out glass, it would stop that.
Okay, I get that.
I've talked to a couple of parents too, who mentioned in the past in safety, not just in the school buildings, but outside things. I know, for example, one was like the Maraski carnival, where they said it would be nice to have police presence or security in some way, just to be present at all school activities. I know, I haven't been to a football game in forever, but I know that like football games are another very crowded, heated thing where people get really into what they're watching. So might be good to ramp up there.
I think we have police though at.
Yeah, our high school sporting events, we have police at our high school sporting events. And so, and then different events where we have large crowds, they're present.
But I think that's an example for me where I have the questions, like, you know, we're all thinking through things and, you know, do we need to expand it, police at this event, or an after-hours event, or whatever? I can ask the questions, but I don't have the expertise, the way our safety forces do, to say things like metal detectors, they're a big expense. They, they don't have a direct effect on safety the same way just having an adult at the entrance. And that's why I want to do this as a partnership, and we'll ask the questions and figure out the answers in collaboration and then make some decisions. But as far as the community is concerned, you know, we obviously want everyone to understand this is, this is a priority for us, and we will work through it. We have things that we want to get done before the start of school. But it's, again, it's not, once it's done, we're finished. It's regular drills and, you know, I was going to comment, there's that one part in your paragraph that, you know, the Ohio Department of Education signs off on it, the police chief signs off on it, the administrators sign off on it, and the principals sign off on it. That's not just pencil whipping it. That's, each person saying, I've reviewed it, I've taken the time, and I'm signing that, it's almost a contract of, these are the things I'm going to do. And that's the way we look at it. So I did want to share that with the community. Does anybody else have any questions?
I do, I have two. I'm supportive of the Stop the Bleed Kits, as you are. I just have a question about that. You said we wouldn't need to replace them until we use them, right? Is there anything inside of them that would expire in time that we would have to?
I don't believe so. You know, last time we spoke of that, you know, there was not anything. Because, and I would have to see, there's options where you can get vacuum-sealed trauma kits. There's options where you're just going to get the supplies and make their own. So I've seen the spreadsheet of what Chief Draves wants to have in there. And based on my knowledge, I didn't see anything that would expire.
Okay, great. And then the other question I have is, when we started addressing COVID and the needs of space and things, we made a lot of adjustments that I know of at the elementary schools in terms of entrance and exit of the school building at the beginning of the end of the day. The thing that comes to mind is, the release at Surarr right now is, kids are coming out at three doors, and there's like no car line, so kids just kind of go everywhere. Have we talked about putting those car lines? And this is just the one I know, but I know we all made, you know, changes at all schools. Have we talked about going back to pre-COVID? So the car line felt to me a lot more controlled and supervised than the current process we had for COVID. Are we going back now that we don't have the distance requirements?
Correct. So that's, in talking with Chief Fender, that's his, his direction is to, in essence, go back to what we were doing a handful of years ago.
I was just going to piggyback, I know with my work, you know, part of our safety procedures, you check every first aid kit, because a first aid kit isn't any good if it's empty when you need it. So we have people assigned that quarterly, they check every first aid kit and make sure to get more Band-Aids and more gauze, et cetera. And I would assume, whatever it would be, those Stop the Bleed Kits would just be part of that process.
Yeah, and there's training that goes along with that as well, right? Because a big part of what's in there is, you know, tourniquets. And if you don't know how to use the specific tourniquet that's in there, so there would be training on those, like we do with AEDs and EpiPens and a variety of other things in the school district.
And feeding off of what you said, Michelle, I was thinking with the pickup, drop-off kind of stuff, parents, you know, I know some of the congestion in the parking lots can be very frustrating. I've been there, I drop off in the morning, I've seen people yelling at each other at different buildings. I think having someone out there and present in the morning and afternoon, not because someone's going to enter the building and do something, but road rage is a very real thing, and all it takes is one person starting something in a parking lot and injuring others. I think that having that presence out there during those things, not even just, you know, keeping where the kids are going, make sure they're going in the correct car, which is obviously important. But in those heated situations where something could happen.
I agree.
Good point.
There isn't a person, you know, now I'm trying to think, there is no person who actually brings the kids to the car.
Not at the elementary level, no. And we talked about that with the police, about their comfort level with that. And so we ended the discussion with, our current practice is fine as long as we have an adult out there that's visible. So Michelle shared the example from Surarr, you know, that's not replicated at all of our buildings. So we've got buildings where, you know, these three, four cars pull up. There's an adult standing there, the kids get into those three and four cars, they move out, and then the next three and four cars come up. So based on the parking lot situation, the building structure, some buildings are more easily accessible for that type of parent pickup, some are not. So we've just got to work through those challenges.
I don't know the answer to this. Do the cars have stickers that say that they are the parent that's supposed to be picking it up? Could it be a parent that's not, or a guardian that's not supposed to have access to a child that's in this car? That they recognize at the elementary level, that they're like, oh, there's my aunt so-and-so? And they get in the car and they're not supposed to be with them?
Right. You know, that's true, because I picked up my granddaughter at Chapman, and it ran through my head because there was somebody standing kind of at the door, but she was running through and didn't see me right away. And I started yelling her name. Now, she could have like run to anybody, I mean, you know what I mean? I'm used to like, not to compare St. Joe's, but I mean, they actually, there is a person that puts them in each car. I just, now that I'm thinking about it, yeah, that did strike me. I don't think that's safe, actually, for all the kids. Because there could be, if people know that we free-for, you know, like everybody just goes, who knows who's sitting in that parking lot at any given time? If they're aware that we don't have a person who is responsible for getting that child to the car. I mean, they're not, they're only like kinder to fifth grade, is like the oldest. I think it is something we should look into, really.
So they're not going to a car they recognize, and it's not necessarily their car, because they're not reading the license plate?
Well, it doesn't matter, it could be anybody just standing on the lawn there when they're all running out. You know, I mean, you don't know, and everybody's just getting their kids and dragging them to their car. I mean, a lot of times people don't pay attention to every single thing that's going on, so.
So one of the things we use in our preschool, I believe we still use it, is they have like a color card that says their name on it. You know, I think the, Sharon, I appreciate the idea. I think the practicality of trying to make that work is, other than checking IDs of every person that's coming, you start to recognize parents after a while. And, but, so I think the, the looking at the, the best alternative we have is to have something that identifies that this is who I am on a, a car. But the reality is, is somebody can make that up, right? Somebody can print off something. So I think that's something we could definitely put on the list and brainstorm with our principals when they come back here in a few weeks of what are ways that we can do that, you know? A lot, a lot of our buildings, you know, over the years, they see the same cars, the same parents, they know which kids get into which cars, so, but we can take a look at it.
Certainly, we can take a look at it, and we will, and we should. But it's also not the Wild West. We're not just opening the doors and the kids are just running out.
Have you seen dismissal?
Have you seen dismissal?
It may feel like the Wild West, but I mean, I remember.
It is the Wild West.
Screaming, tumbleweeds?
Yes, it really is. I've been to two different ones, Surarr and Chapman, in there both.
Then we should review it, because I remember in Maraski, the first graders helped the kindergartners make sure that they all got on the right bus, et cetera. And I don't remember who the principal was at the time, but I think he did an okay job. And, but again, this is all good stuff for us to review and tighten up where we need to. Any other questions? What's next on the agenda?
Next on the agenda is enrollment studies. So you have two things, two documents that I printed out for you. We'll start with the one that's got the, it looks like slides versus the green sheet. So as the board knows, I've communicated my updates with you. We contracted with a company called Cooperative Strategies to provide an enrollment study for us to take a look at our current growth and future growth. So what they did is they took a look and looked at projections from 10 years. So they kind of looked at, here's the 10 years from 2012 to '22, and let's look at 2022 to 2032. And they looked at two areas. They looked at, what do we see in terms of birth rates in our zip codes? What do we see in terms of, you see it here, it's a cohort survival method. That's like a horrible term, but they, what that means is, we get X amount of students in kindergarten. And if we track that cohort through, all the way through 12th grade, does that cohort increase, does it decrease, and by which rate? And you could start to say like, okay, when we go from kindergarten to first grade, that cohort increases by 20%. So then you start to say, when we get so far out that kids aren't even born yet, that are going to enter our school, we can use that to use that as an algorithm to say, well, we know, if we can predict the average number of kindergarten or Strongsville City Schools is going to get, then we can predict 20% more is going to be first grade, and that cohort is going to increase by 8% when they go to second grade. And, and oh my goodness, when they go to high school, we get another bump of 6%. So you can see that, this thing has a mind of its own over here. So that's kind of what they did. The other thing that we took a look at is housing and building permits. You know, what are we going to see? There's a few small developments that are coming online. What are we going to see in terms of that? And they take a look at a variety of things. So you've seen the pack, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time going into the details. But again, what you have in front of you is saying, on the left in the red side, is saying, on average, the average living arrangement in our city will generate about .3 of a kid. So if we have, you know, one home, one single-family home, that's like .3 of a student that would possibly come to Strongsville City Schools. And then you can take a look at the differences at the various elementary schools and at the middle school and high school, based on whether you're in a single-family home, an apartment, or a condominium. So again, if we start to say, hey, we've got 90 homes that are coming from Emerald Woods, is that going to bring us 180 new students? No, it's going to bring us like 30 to 40 new students, based on the multiplier of .3. Man, what is with this? Never use Adobe again, George. You'll have to teach me your tricks for not having it move. So, so again, this goes through some of the planned communities, the next slide, some of the ones that are currently active. And again, the Emerald Woods, which I just talked about, is looking to say, well, of those 90 homes that are being built there, that'll increase enrollment here, they're projecting by about 34 students. So if you look at the variety of places that are being built, 63 new students can come from that. Nothing that's going to make a major shift in our district. The, the next thing that slide here is what I talked about, is that survival ratio and how the metrics were utilized. This slide gives you, and again, if not next week, the week after, I'll share all of this with our community. We'll put it on our website, they can see the full report, so they can dig into it for the people that are interested. This goes through each of the zip codes that, you know, can go to Strongsville City Schools, looks at birth rates through those, so you can kind of see, you know, what the projected enrollment of the district will be. And that's based on a variety of statistics. This next slide gives you the view of our historical enrollment. The first one is just by grade level separately. 13, if you see 13, we have students with disabilities that are able to stay beyond their 12th grade year. So 13 is just the number that quantifies those that stay beyond there. 23, I, I'm not sure on what the 23 is, I can't remember. So I won't speak to that. So you could see the totals that are there, the K to 12 and the grand total. So you can see from 10 years ago, we were about, we were at 6,169 students. This past year, we ended with 5,644 students. So just by looking at the bar graph that's there, we've dipped a little bit, but now we're rising back up. And you could see that breakdown between the different levels that are there. It also takes a look at it by building. So you can kind of see how level or how much each of the buildings are growing. And for example, you could take a look at 10 years ago, Chapman was 348 students. This past year, they were 371 students. So over the 10-year period, Chapman's really not moving a lot. You know, Kinsner has gained, this is so. I'm not even touching it. I know, it must sense that I want to go to the next slide, but not yet. So Kinsner has increased by 80 students. You can see Maraski's kind of dipped down a little bit, but they're getting ready to pick back up. And again, I think the high school's a good example, 2,200 students and 1,900 students. So again, historically, you can see where the buildings are at. And just as a point of clarification, you know, typically what happens is we see reduction in enrollment at the elementary level, and then eventually it gets to the, that's what we're seeing now, is the years of 300ths at the elementary to 400ths are now in the middle school and high school. We're graduating 5 and 600ths. And then when enrollment starts to increase, you're going to see lower enrollment in the secondary and high enrollment in the elementary before it gets there. So what they do in terms of projecting forward, the left side of this graph shows our historical enrollment. The right side, and there's actually four lines that are there. They give you projections that they consider high, moderate, low, and recommended. So the top line is saying, hey, if we really make a high recommendation in terms of where your enrollment's going to go, that's that line, the yellow one at the bottom is low. The moderate one is right in the middle. And the recommended is right kind of on top of it. So that's what they're saying is, hey, kind of in that middle area, that's our best, you know, scientific guess as to where your enrollment is going to go. So what you can see here, this is based on, the full document shows you, here's what it looks like, high, medium, low, and recommended. What these graphs are showing you is, you know, they're recommended. So let's, Chapman again, next year is projected at 382. 10 years, they're projected to be at 408. Not a big deal, right? Kinsner, they're projected to be, this upcoming school, 693. Wow, that's pretty big. And by the end of this, 762. And you could kind of go through and see, the high school next year is going to be 1807. But by the end of this, 10 years, they're going to be back to 2012 levels of over 2,200 students. So this goes by building, oh, it skips, so that goes, I'm sorry, that goes by grade level, it goes by grade level band. You can see in 10 years, it's projecting we're back at that 6,600 student mark, so we're looking to gain about another 1,000 students. mark, so we're looking to gain about another 1,000 students over the next 10 years. And that matches up with about, we're seeing about 100 and so some students new a year. And then, this last slide here depicts what that looks like, as we were talking about at the buildings. So, a lot of information to share. And then, to just kind of start the discussion about what are we going to do, we've talked about it, I've shared with the community, that we're starting to explore an elementary facilities project. We're going to be spending this whole year engaging with our parents and staff and community as to not so much designing buildings, or not at all designing buildings, but what types of schools do we want? What are locations that we want? What are size structures, things of that nature? And then, that will help us to plan. And this will help us to plan based on what number of students do we want to have in here. Now, one of the questions I asked is, since we're not seeing many new homes being built, and those new homes aren't going to generate major shifts in enrollment, where are the hundreds of kids coming from, right? And they're coming from housing, sale of existing homes. A lot of it is, you know, our senior residents may be downsizing, may be moving, and families with children are moving in. How do we capture this in the statistical analysis? Now, what they said is, it's been able to be captured already in that cohort analysis, based on the movement that's happened so far. But, it could increase. And if it does increase, and we start seeing the rate increase, then we would go back to them and say, we want you to do an updated analysis over these last couple of years, where we've seen the housing market turn over and bring increased students to our district. So, again, just informational for tonight, making sure that you've kind of got the lay of the land for the enrollment. Any questions just on those charts or data, before I kind of talk about a second analysis that we've done?
I was going to share that one of the processes is, I mean, ultimately, they're all spreadsheets. So, we'll be able to plug in actuals each year and redo these predictions and see, are the predictions staying accurate, or is it going to be a higher number, and then we have to account and plan for that?
So, one of the things, you know, I completed a couple of weeks ago, and then we'll loop back with the principals once they get back, is asking the question of, if we, whenever we decide, as a school district, that it's time to go for a bond issue and go for an elementary facilities project, whenever that date is, whenever the community decides to support that, you're looking at about three more years to students are actually in the building. So, for example, if you say, hey, we're going to go out in 2025, you've got to be ready to withstand enrollment through 2028. And so, one of the things, and you have a green sheet in front of you, that we've started to put together, is a building capacity analysis. So, what I've done is, each level of each build, or each level, and so, I'm saying at preschool, in our current capacity of two classrooms at Chapman, as well as the classrooms we have at Lun Road, we're good to go, right? It's hard to predict, because these young people aren't even born yet. But, based on our past patterns, we should be okay with preschool. If we take a look at elementary, and I've got a lot of data in front of you, and you can dig into that, I'll highlight Chapman. So, again, what I used was our current class guidelines, which is K to 3, we have 25 students, 4 to 5, 30 students. And looking at each of the grade levels, the first section where it's not highlighted is current sections for next year. So, what this is saying is that for next school year, we have four sections of preschool, one section of half-day, and then you could read the rest. So, that's telling you how many classes we basically have of each of those. We multiply that times the caps. So, we have one section of halftime, half-day kindergarten, we can have 25 kids per section, we have two of full day, that's 50. So, that's saying, here's how many kids we can fit. So, at Chapman, next year, total, we can fit 489 students if we filled every seat that we had available. Two weeks ago, when I did this, based on enrollment, current enrollment is actually how many kids are set to go to Chapman. And you could see, right now, we're at 405 students. The sections and the classrooms do not mean the same thing. They mean the same thing, except for preschool and half-day kindergarten. So, what this is saying at this bottom here is, if you really look at the total, to make this all work, I need 18 classrooms. On the right-hand side of it, I've listed, we currently have 23 classrooms at Chapman. We could add three classrooms if we did a little minor construction to one of the areas, and if we displaced art and music, meaning we put them on a cart, they're going to travel to the rooms. So, altogether, that says, we could have 26 classrooms at Chapman. But, we have, we at minimum are going to need three classrooms at Chapman to help support our students with disabilities, and a classroom to support our gifted learners. So, 26 minus those four rooms means, we really only have 22 classrooms that we realistically can use. And what I did going on here is, I said, if I have 22 classrooms, in the gray section, what is the max number of sections that I could have? And that's there, you could look at it. And, again, at the bottom, I recreated the top, and I looked through the data that I just went over for you, and said, over the next 10 years, what year is Chapman going to be the biggest? And it was going to be the biggest in FY '25, so that's the '24, '25 school year. And so, I broke that down by grade level, and how many classrooms I needed. And I said, okay, if we hit that peak, are we still okay? And the answer for Chapman is yes. We are still okay. We may need to displace art or music for a little bit, but we can withstand the peak of enrollment. And then, the only other thing that's there is, on the right, it says OFCC max capacity. There's, you know, whether it's the building permits, or whether it's OFCC, they'll kind of say, here's how many students could fit. Chapman, they're saying 700 kids could fit in that building. Okay. But, that's what they're saying. So, again, we're within range there. So, I'm not going to go through all the details of each of those sheets. Other to say, otherwise to say, that we will be okay at Chapman and Sarar. Now, Michelle and I had this conversation, it's a good conversation, that we'll add another layer of details are, is yes, we can make it work, but how many band and orchestra is on a stage? You know, we've got offices that are really closets. We've got people that are teaching, not teaching classes, but support services, occupational therapists, speech therapists, we've got reading interventions, Title I support, that are in less than desirable locations, right? Media centers are being utilized for available space. So, it's not, I don't want to create this perfect scenario, that everybody's got their own unique space, we're in a good spot. It's, we can make it work, right? We can live through it. Kinsner, Maraski, and Whitney are the buildings where we have concerns, that we're not going to make it to '28 if the projections are there. So, just to highlight that, you know, classrooms that we have at Kinsner, the max classrooms is 27. Their peak enrollment is later on, but it kind of stays consistently high. They would need 31 classrooms. So, as early as, not this year, but the next school year, we could be in a difficult spot at Kinsner. The same is true for Maraski, the same is true for Whitney. So, we'll just have to see, do the projections come true? But, not just wait and see, we'll have to plan for some contingencies as to what can we do if we run out of space at those elementary buildings. But, that's the elementary.
Cameron, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Speaking of room utilization, would you bring that data for, you know, people that are in closets, et cetera?
Yeah.
Can you clarify which buildings have art and music already displaced? Because that is the case.
That is the case, yeah. And Jenny's finalized, and we had some folks that were supposed to be, but now they're not. So, we'll be finalizing that, and we'll share that as well. Yeah. In terms of the middle school and high school, we don't have, you know, the kids are moving. So, it's a little different scenario. We can actually withstand higher numbers there, because teachers can share rooms. So, the high school, we're in a good spot. You know, we will increase, and there'll be more teachers sharing rooms, but we'll be in a decent spot. In terms of the middle school, we will be good, except for 6th grade. And it's a structural, it's not a middle school-sized capacity thing, as you see, it could hold 1,700 students. And at the peak of it, we are at 1,600 students. It's about a structure that we've put in place. So, for 7th and 8th grade, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, our kids are on teams. In 7th and 8th grade, those teams are divided into five classrooms or five teachers. In 6th grade, they're only divided by four. So, when you only, and that was a choice we made, based on how we did the class schedule for them, and because there's 6th graders and transitioning. So, that's something that we're going to have to look at. It's not about displacing kids or more space, it's more about, what can we do when it's going to exceed the number of kids that, you know, because if you just look math, I can have, if I have four teachers, I can put 120 kids on a team, each teacher gets 30, that's livable. So, and you have four teams, that's 480, 80 kids. If you're seeing you have 543 kids, I've got 60 kids that I've got to figure out where we're going to put. And going above 30 is not something that's acceptable to do. As you could see, in 7th and 8th grade, you've got spots for 600 kids. So, you've got plenty of room. So, things that we have to decide and look at in the next few years. Just wanted to kind of start the discussion, start the update. Again, no decisions that we need, it's just kind of sharing information at this time. I've got some follow-up items that we'll do for, as we dig into the capacity issues at the elementary school. And then, really, the next steps for us are to, outside of the facilities work, is to take a look at what is our short, medium, and long-term planning for elementary capacity issues, and what is tolerable and what's not tolerable.
Any questions for Cameron? So, I will share with the community, one of our board-level goals is the elementary schools and dealing with the facilities in general. It is a long-term goal. We recognize it's not something that we're going to just accomplish in one year, but it is our direction to address these issues. And this is, this is the work we're doing now as part of that goal. I'm glad it's going to be published on the web, so that the seven other people that are really interested in these numbers can get at it. But, no, I'm joking. The data's important, and it'll be helpful to get as many eyes on it as we can. Like Cameron said, we have some short-term issues and problem-solving to do, but ultimately, we have that long-term planning.
With that, we'll move on to an item for your consideration, memorandum of understanding with the Strongsville Police Department. As I discussed, be resolved upon my recommendation that the memorandum of understanding between the police department and Strongsville City School District be approved as stated in Exhibit B. So, again, this is the SR, the school resource officer for the middle school and the high school, and is inclusive of the cost sharing of $97,000 that we should talk about.
Did anyone have any questions on that? I will share, you know, when you're talking about the school district, or you're talking about the city, you know, who's paying for it becomes an issue, and we are changing our MOU, that we're going to share that burden, and we thank the city for the entirety of that burden prior. But, we all recognize, we're playing bucket games. Yes, we're sharing half of that. The taxpayer is paying for all of it, and we recognize that, and we thank them for that.
Under business services, we've talked about the elementary facilities planning and master planning services. We are recommending to contract with GPD Services to utilize their master planning services, as found in Exhibit C. We do have an addendum under business services, Mr. Miko, but I am going to pull that at this time. We've had increased enrollment in our football program, so we're going to hold on to those extra shoulder pads until a time where we can see the numbers stabilize, to determine whether we need to recondition them, or we can donate them.
It's a good problem to have.
Yeah. Then, moving on to curriculum, we have an internship agreement for your consideration between Miami University and Strongsville City Schools, as presented in Exhibit D. Then, we do have a series of student handbooks, those have all been shared with the board, with highlights of the changes for you to review. Under number two is the early learning preschool handbook. Number three is the elementary handbook for next school year. Number four is the middle school handbook. Five is the high school handbook. And six is the high school athletic handbook, for your consideration, be approved for the 2022, '23 school year. Number seven is an overnight trip for the high school boys and girls cross-country team. It's an overnight camp that will take place August 1st through 5th at Lakeside Historic Village in Lakeside, Ohio. Transportation will be provided by parents, and costs associated with the trip will be paid for students by fundraising activities. Under number eight, we have a school psychology internship, Sasha Gutierrez, to be at Chapman Elementary School with Jenna Skinner, from August 17th to May 26th next year, and is a student at Miami University. And we do have, under number nine, a revision to a previous agenda item to correct the grades. It should, it will be used in grades three through 12, instead of grades three to eight. Are there any questions on the curriculum items?
Next month, will we do an addendum to allow board members to, that are interested in the gizmo science?
Absolutely. Under student services, we have one item, be resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent, that the Board of Education enters into an agreement with Cleveland Clinic Children's Hospital for Rehabilitation, on behalf of its learner school for autism for a student with disabilities for 2022, '23 school year, per Exhibit E. Any questions on student services? With that, I'll turn it over to Jenny for the human resource report for the month. Jenny?
Thank you, Dr. Iba. Under human resources, I have the following items for your consideration. Under E1, we have two resignations for our certificated staff. Under E2, appointment for a certificated athletic supplemental contract. Under E3, change in hours for non-certificated staff. Under E4, change in status for certificated staff from a full-time to a .4. Under E5, contract recommendations for certificated staff. We have some additional limited contracts there. Under E6, stipend for a technology coach. And under E7, we have our Works International. So, this serves as our training program for all of the training that our staff goes through every year, including new staff that need to do modules via the program, as well as our Student Watch Program, where it houses our discipline data and all of the data that goes into both our positive behavior support systems and discipline. So, that is an exhibit for your review. And then, I also have an addendum. Under E2, we had two additional appointments for certificated staff. So, some new teachers and accounts are joining us. And that concludes my report.
And just, Jenny, I think we're just a couple of staff members away from being fully staff for certificated staff?
We have three more, hopefully, so.
Say that again. How many more?
I think three more, yeah. I know we have some more appointments next week, Dr. Iba. So, get ready.
We're getting close, we're getting close, and we've got some great new staff members to add to our already great staff. So, we're looking forward to having them, and get started working with them soon. We do not have any items under technology for this month, so that concludes my report.
Any questions for Cameron? Next on our agenda is consent calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent calendar, at this point of the agenda, means all items in the agenda with asterisks are adopted by a single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? For the record, we have polled the Business Services B2 addendum, and we are including the Human Resources 2 Appointments addendum. Do I have a motion?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
I will give it to Mrs. Kilbane by a hair. Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Stochek?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Superintendent's timely information.
So, just similar reminders to last time, but wanted to add on there, we've now finalized our open house dates. So, all elementary schools will be on Monday, August 15th, the middle school on August 16th, and the high school the week thereafter on August 23rd. So, as the principals get back and start sending out their welcome-back newsletters, all of the details for open houses will be included in those items. Don't forget, supply lists are also online now at all of the buildings. And don't forget, if you are eligible for free and reduced lunches, you can go to payschoolcentral.com to complete the application. And if you still have unpaid school fees, it would be best to pay those before the school year starts, and so that your child can participate in field trips and dances and all of those things that they wouldn't be allowed to with... and dances and all of those things, uh, that, uh, they wouldn't be allowed to with, uh, prior school fee balances. And that's it, Mr. Miko.
Thank you. Uh, Board of Education, other, do we have any others? Meeting notification, the annual board retreat will be held August 1st in room 201 at Polaris Career Center. Our next regular Board of Education meeting work session will be held Thursday, August 11th, 7:00 PM in this room. And then our regular Board of Education meeting will be August 25th in this room, 7:00 PM. We do have reason for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment of a public employee and to discuss details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for the Board of Education.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Ms. Stavcek. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Tocheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, the motion carries. We will enter into executive session at 8:35. I will thank everyone for their attention and remind them that our Chamber of Commerce Home Days are going on right now, so run out and go. I hear there are goldfish at the goldfish tent, but, uh...
We have a bunch.
But, uh, Home Days is today, tomorrow, and Saturday. So take, uh, take, uh, the opportunity and to enjoy the event and thank you for your attention and have a nice evening.